Busy yesterday. Big cat today.
I'm not drinking. I'm not drinking.
Oh, they busy down there though.
Right.
We're busy down at the market.
Yeah.
There were only nine per- nine percent of them went out. And I'm amazed that some nine percent of the normal people went out. It's usually if it's thirty-five to forty percent people go off for a same cat one, nine percent went out this time.
Yeah. A lot of people were closed. We're in here now. Man, I gotta throw this thing in the bathtub.
Can I get you a pack to put it in?
Got an envelope.
I'll see if I got an extra one of these. These are nice. Don't watch for them at work.
At work.
Ready now.
Okay, the meeting will please come to order. This is a duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. Matters of this type, the decision of this board is final. In respect that it does not go to the mayor or the city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse on the court record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and city council, making the recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. Secretary, pull the board, please.
Ms. Safer.
Here.
Mr. Lassio.
Here.
Mr. McCauley.
I'm here.
Mr. Nocktree.
Here.
Mr. Riggs.
Here.
Ms. Rohr. Mr. Hennessy.
Here. Hey, we have a quorum. Okay.
Approval of minutes, I believe, is in order for last meeting February eighteenth.
So move.
Second.
Pull the board.
Mr. Lassio.
Aye.
Mr. McCauley.
Aye.
Mr. Nocktree.
Aye.
Mr. Riggs.
Aye.
Ms. Safer.
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is citizens to be heard on agenda items. This section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding items listed on the agenda. Anyone speaking on an agenda item is entitled to speak for a maximum of four minutes. It is not a question and answer period, and staff in the zoning board of appeals does not generally respond to public comments. Please note speakers who engage in conduct interest to the harmony of the zoning board of appeals shall be called to order by the presiding officer and may forfeit the opportunity to speak. Is there anybody wanting to speak? There will be other opportunities once that petition comes up, if you'd rather speak then, but you can speak now. Not looking like anyone wants to speak. Next agenda item is old business, public hearing, and we have none under that section of our agendas. Moving on to new business. I'd just like to make everyone aware that twenty twenty-one zero eight down the agenda, if you have a copy, number C for thirteen oh two West Acres, has been withdrawn by the petitioner, so that petition is no longer relevant. On that particular case, the petitioner withdrew after discussions with staff, and he may pursue building out that space and combining it with the second unit. So if people do see construction, he may be doing that work, but it's not creating another unit. It's just adding it to that second unit in his facility there, making it a little bit larger. So, you know, our neighborhood, it's on Neighborhood Services Inspection Program, so they'll continue to monitor it for under rental, and the building department will follow up with any code restrictions and planning review, will review their plans, but there won't be a third unit being proposed at this location. So if anybody's here for that, that will not be discussed. Then there's no other move-ups requested, so petition twenty twenty-one zero six. The applicant is Wentworth Tire Service. The owner is ISP Joliet LLC, care of Ben Kramer. Location is sixteen sixty-five Terry Drive, and they request a special use permit. Petitioners requesting approval of its special use permit to allow a tire sales and service facility for both passenger vehicles and commercial trucks. As per the applicable zoning code, section forty-seven fourteen three D, all industrial districts, repair establishments may be allowed as special uses by the mayor and city council with the advice of the zoning board in accordance with section forty-seven five point two. Under site-specific information, the one point three acre site is currently zoned I-two general industrial. Site is improved with a seventy-five hundred square foot brick and metal building that was previously used by Hoyt Brothers Trucking. Site improvements contain an existing asphalt parking lot and onsite signage. This case was filed on February seventh, twenty twenty-one. Surrounding zoning land use in character to the north is undeveloped I-two zoning. To the south is industrial I-two zoning. East I-two zoning and commercial, and to the west is commercial with I-two zoning. Under applicable regulations, section forty-seven fourteen point two A.D., special uses, all industrial districts, and forty-seven five point two C, special uses, criterion for approval, and that's attached as part of the petition. Under discussion, the petitioner Wentworth Tire Service has been operating in the Chicago area since nineteen thirty-two. They are a full-service auto repair shop. They currently have six locations in the Chicago area. They provide brake repairs, new belts and hoses, lube and oil changes, exhaust repair, tire services, and wheel alignments. Wentworth Tire Service is currently located at two thousand Mowen Avenue in Rockdale, but it has outgrown their space there. They have entered a contract to purchase the available facility at sixteen sixty-five Terry Drive. Their proposed operation would include five employees. The hours of operation are proposed as Monday through Friday, seven AM to five thirty PM, Saturday, seven AM to noon, and closed on Sunday. Adequate parking is available in the front for fifteen vehicles, and the back area includes a large parking area that can accommodate additional parking and larger truck parking. And you could see attached plan and aerial map for more information. Two service bays currently exist on the building. Three access drives are located along Terry Drive. The goal of the operation would be to capture the existing trucks in the area that needs service. Relocation of the sales and repair facilities to subject site adequately meets the requirements for the granting of a special use permit that has been established within the zoning ordinance and should not have any negative effects on the surrounding industrial area. If the zoning board desires to approve the special use permit, following conditions would be included: that a business license be applied for and approved prior to opening; that the special use granted shall herein terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained no later than three hundred and sixty-five days, and so forth in that part of the section; and three, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Petitioner present? Pull the board, please. I must swear you win. You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law.
Yes.
Give an address.
Name and address? Jonathan Jaeger, the address of the property. Which address?
Any comments you'd like to make?
Sorry? I can't hear you. I'm sorry. Try again.
Are there any additional comments beyond the staff report that you would like to add, or is that acceptable?
No, I'm sorry.
Any questions, then, board? I have answered the questions. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
I second.
You have a second?
Yeah.
We have a motion to second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Mr. McCauley.
Aye.
Mr. Nocktree.
Aye.
Mr. Riggs.
Aye.
Ms. Safer.
Aye.
Mr. Lassio.
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy.
Aye.
Moving on to the next, moving on to the next agenda item, I should add that that will go before the city council in the second meeting in April, if anybody's interested for a final vote on that. Moving on the agenda, petition number twenty twenty-one zero seven, Jose Uloa. Location is twenty-one thirteen Glenwood Avenue. Request a variation to increase the maximum allowable wall height for a garage from ten feet to twelve feet. Purpose, the owner is requesting a variation to increase the maximum allowable wall height of a proposed garage from ten-foot high to twelve-foot high. The garage is located at twenty-one thirteen Glenwood Avenue. Zoning Board of Appeals makes a final decision for this request. Under site-specific information, the property is zoned R-one, single-family residential district, and is ten thousand four hundred and ninety-six square feet in size. The one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six square foot house was built around nineteen sixty-eight. Surrounding zoning land use in character, the property sits at the southern edge of a residential neighborhood along the busy Glenwood Avenue. Property is surrounded by single-family homes to the north, east, and south, and these surrounding parcels are zoned R-one, single-family residential. Property to the south is a medical office building and is zoned RB, restricted business. There are few examples of properties with detached garages in this neighborhood. Applicable regulations, section forty-seven seventeen five garages, section forty-seven nineteen point eight findings of fact supporting a variation, and you can refer to an attachment for that information. Under discussion, the property owner obtained building permits to construct a twenty by twenty-six-foot rear detached garage along with a driveway extension to this garage with barrier curbing for drainage in twenty twenty. Twenty by twenty-six concrete pad has been installed. Prior to the construction of the garage, the property owner decided to seek a variance in to increase the maximum allowable wall height from ten to twelve feet so that he can stack his collectible vehicles by way of a vehicle lift. A plan and building plans are included with the staff report. The property is located along the busy Glenwood Avenue, where on-street parking is prohibited, and under conditions, there's none. So that concludes the staff report.
Petitioner here? I swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law.
I do.
Give an address, please.
My name is Jose Uloa. Address twenty-one thirteen Glenwood Avenue, Joliet.
Okay. Any comments you'd like to make, sir?
It was pretty much on the report. I need the extra space.
What do you need the extra two feet for? What is the reason for that?
Well, we have, I wanted to build three-car garage originally, but being there's a sewer line going through my backyard, minimizes my width. That's why I need the height, so I can have the lift on there.
Any questions, buzzboard?
Yeah, um, is this gonna be taller than the house? I mean, are you gonna be able to see this garage from when you're looking at the front of the house?
Oh, no.
It seems like it's gonna be a lot taller than what that.
Well, you may be able to see the roof from the street, but garage itself is directly behind the house.
Pretty much takes up your backyard. A little taller, you could probably put a bedroom up there.
No, that's not, that's not my intention at all.
But there's, it seems like there's a real thin driveway there on the west side of the house.
What I have to work with, I have ten feet, and that's, that's all the man I have to work with. Because I could, I could not, I wanted to do a straight back, but I can't do, you know, go right through my driveway to do my garage straight back because I have easement for utilities, and then I have that sewer line going through the back, so there's.
What if the neighbor was to put up a fence? I mean, wouldn't that be kinda, that'd be kinda thin getting through there, wouldn't it?
The neighbors already have fences on both sides.
Okay, the one on the west side too?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I understand I'm not gonna be able to get big cars back there or whatever. It's gonna be, it's not my everyday cars that are going in there.
Okay.
Any further comments? Well, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed?
I've got one more question. This isn't approved yet. Why is the foundation in there already?
It's been approved for, the garage has been approved, the driveway's been approved. The height is what I'm looking for.
Oh, yeah.
Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the petition. Pull the board, please.
Mr. Nocktree.
Aye.
Mr. Riggs.
Aye.
Ms. Safer.
Aye.
Mr. Lassio.
Aye.
Mr. McCauley.
No.
Mr. Hennessy.
Aye.
That petition passes, and that does not have to go to city council, so that is the last decision on that. Moving on. Moving on the agenda, petition number twenty twenty-one zero nine and twenty twenty-one ten. M.I. Holmes is the petitioner here for this case. M.I. Holmes. Pardon me? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure the petitioner was here. Like I said, the applicant is M.I. Holmes of Chicago LLC. Location is sixty-six sixteen and six seven zero one O'Connor Drive, and this is a variation request. The petition is, the petitioner is requesting a variation of a required front yard setback from thirty feet to twenty-six feet for two single-family houses under construction in the Legacy Point subdivision. Zoning Board of Appeals makes the final decision on these requests. Site-specific information, two lots, one hundred and five, lot one oh five and lot one nineteen. Both of them are sixty-seven feet by one twenty or eight thousand forty square feet. They contain single-family houses under certain construction. Property is zoned R-one, single-family residential. These cases were filed on February twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, the properties in question adjacent to other single-family residential properties within the Legacy Point subdivision, they all have R-one A, single-family zoning. Under applicable regulations, forty-seven six point four yard and lot requirements, section forty-seven nineteen point eight findings of fact supporting a variation, and you can refer to the attached petitions for what's under that requirement. Under discussions, these two single-family houses were mistakenly sighted with concrete porches encroaching into the thirty-foot front yard setback by four feet. You could see the attached plats. Uncovered porches are permitted in this encroachment by ten feet, but covered porches need to maintain the thirty-foot setback. Two houses, which were the Riley and Seneca models, and they are attached, are under construction and include covered porches. The petitioner would like to continue construction of these and be able to sell them to interested buyers. If approved, the four-foot variation should not cause any detrimental effects to the surrounding area or neighborhood. There's no conditions required, and that concludes the staff reports.
Petitioner here? I swear you're putting, you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law.
I do.
Put out your names and addresses.
My name is Megan Elberts. My address is eleven thirty-seven Kennelworth Circle in Naperville.
My name is Christie Davidson, and I live at two south fourth seven three Van Cartport in Glen Island.
Okay, any comments?
I am the owner of Gestas Elberts Consulting. I'm a professional engineer. Christie is a professional land surveyor, and we were responsible for the front slats that were presented to you, and as the status report says, that it was mistakenly permitted this way. It was not intentional, so we really appreciate you hearing our petition this afternoon.
When you submitted your plans to the city, did they include the setback?
Yes, they did.
How did that slide through that?
Was thought that these were uncovered porches when we reviewed it. You know, they weren't showing as covered porches, and then it was identified later that these were covered porches.
Just an oversight, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, buzzboard?
Are we gonna, let's say they have more of these models that go up in there, are we gonna have to individually do the special use permit each time, or?
No, this should not happen again, you know.
It was a mistake. It won't happen again.
These two were done on the same day with the same issue, and we checked the subdivision for any other ones. These were the only two occurrences.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments, buzzboard? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor, asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
And we have a second?
Yep.
Pull the board.
Mr. Riggs.
Aye.
Ms. Safer.
Aye.
Mr. Lassio.
Aye.
Mr. McCauley.
Aye.
Mr. Nocktree.
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, again, does not need to go to city council, so that was, that's the last of that. Under next petition, twenty twenty-one eleven, the applicant owner is Victoria Enriquez. Location is five fifty North Chicago Street. Request is a special use permit. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow an auto repair and tire business located at five fifty North Chicago Street. City council makes the final decision for this request upon the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. This petition was filed on February twelfth of this year. Under site-specific information, the property is located at the northeast corner of Chicago Street and Irving Street and is approximately twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet in size. Building on the property has three distinct components: office, a four-bay service center, and storage. Building is surrounded by an asphalt parking area. The property has a long history of automobile-related uses. In the nineteen fifties, Economy Motors used cars operated here. Goodyear maintained a service center here in the nineteen seventies. Telecab utilized the property as their local transportation hub from the late twenty-tens until late last year. The current property owner recently acquired the property and seeks to re-establish an auto repair and tire business at this location. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, to the north is B-three with mixed-use buildings. To the south is B-three general business with apartment buildings. To the east is B-three general business, mixed-use building. To the west is I-one light industrial, and that's Moore Glass Company. Under applicable regulations, section forty-seven thirteen point two A.G., special uses, section forty-seven five point two C, criteria for issuance of special use permit, and you could see your attachments for this criteria. Under discussion, the property owner seeks to re-establish an auto repair and tire, tire repair business at this location. Should this special use permit request be approved, the Joliet Auto Repair Shop business seeks to relocate here from its current facility. They are renting at three fifty Ward Avenue. Building has four service bays. Property is zoned B-three general business. Starting in nineteen ninety-eight, the city began requiring special use permits for auto-related uses. Proposed site plan for this business is included with the staff report package, packet. There is adequate parking available at this property for customers, employees, and repaired vehicles. Anticipated hours of operation are Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM, and Saturday, eight AM to five PM. And that must mean they're closed Sunday. If the zoning board desires to approve the special use permit request, staff would recommend a few landscaping and site improvements, which are outlined below, under conditions. Outside storage of inoperable vehicles and spare parts on the property will be prohibited. If the zoning board desires to recommend approval of this request, the following conditions would be included: That a landscape plan that references, oh, yeah, sorry. There is an addendum to this, so let me refer to that rather than reading the original conditions. Staff in consultation with the applicant has revised the timeline for the landscaping, building, and site improvements to better align these improvements with the realities of spring weather and the timing of the property's acquisition by the new property owner. Therefore, if the zoning board desires to recommend approval of this request, staff would recommend the following conditions be included with the approval. One, that a landscape plan that references a conceptual site plan shall be submitted to and approved by the planning division within forty-five days of ordinance approval, detailing conditions number two through number seven. Number two, that the area of asphalt pavement located at the intersection of Chicago Street and Irving Street shall be removed and defined by barrier curbing per the city's landscape and screening regulations prior to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Three, that all parking areas shall be patched, seal-coated, and striped prior to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Four, that the paved parkway along Irving Street be patched and seal-coated prior to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Five, that the four-foot-wide public sidewalk along Irving Street shall be repaired prior to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Six, that the parkway tree along Chicago Street shall be installed prior to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Seven, that the dumpster shall be screened by a six-foot-high solid fence with a locking gate prior to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Eight, that the building shall be repainted prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The nine, that signed permits shall be submitted to planning staff for review and approval. Ten, that no outside storage of customer vehicles shall be allowed on the city parkway or city streets. Eleven, temporary outdoor storage of vehicles waiting to be serviced or to be picked up shall be limited to ten days. Twelve, no temporary or long-term outdoor storage of inoperable vehicles, boats, recreational vehicles, or parts, including tires, shall be permitted. Thirteen, that off-street parking shall remain in the future. Fourteen, that a city business license shall be secured prior to opening. Fifteen is our special use one hundred and eighty-day clause. Sixteen is failure to comply with any of the above conditions could result in a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. That concludes the staff report. I did, we did receive a email comment. I think that was passed along to you from the the adjacent neighbor just with concerns about re-establishing this use here.
Petitioner here? You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law.
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Victoria Enriquez, six two one Vine Street in Joliet, and then the building is five fifty Chicago Street.
Okay. Do you understand and agree with all those conditions?
Yes, I do.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Um, no, I'm just gonna get everything done even like prior to the date, as long as nothing, you know, happens, like no.
I think it was.
No issues or, you know, happen.
I think they were just concerned that the weather could set them back prior to really wanting to open, and we understand that.
Any questions, buzzboard? Any questions? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Over sliding right through today. Chair closes petition, asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Ms. Safer.
No.
Mr. Lassio.
Aye.
Mr. McCauley.
Aye.
Mr. Nocktree.
Aye.
Mr. Riggs.
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy.
Aye.
So that will go to city council, the second meeting in April with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you so much.
Moving on the agenda, petition number twenty twenty-one twelve. Applicant is Allen Industries. The owner is Bell Tire. Location is twenty- Location is twenty-five twenty-six West Jefferson Street. Series of variations is the request. Uh, the applicant, the applicant is requesting a series of variations for signage for a future Bell Tire business located at twenty-five twenty-six West Jefferson Street. The ZBA makes the final decision for this variation request. Under site-specific information, the lot of the subject property was created with the approval of the Menards Resubdivision in two thousand and six. Vacant lot is ten thousand square feet in size. The property is Zoned B3 General Business. Petition was filed on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, to the north is B3 General Business Advanced Auto Parts Store. To the south is I-1 Light Industrial Menards Store. To the east is B3 General Business Murphy's Express Gas Station. To the west is B3 General Business, a vacant lot. Uh, under applicable regulations, uh, section forty-seven seventeen dot two-one signs, forty-seven dash seventeen point two-one-three BB, criteria for granting a sign variation, and you could refer to the attachments for those criteria. Just, under discussion, Bell Tire is building a new facility at this location, and the city approved their special use permit request in July twenty nineteen to allow auto tire and repair as part of the tire sales facility. Allen Industries, the sign contractor for Bell Tire, requests variations to install wall signs on the east and south elevations of the proposed new building. Signs N-one, N-four, and N-six, uh, in your packet, I believe, uh, on the sign plan, which are elevations that do not face a public street. City of Joliet's zoning ordinance allows business walls, one wall sign per public street front. Purpose of the proposed signage is to increase the store's visibility to people utilizing the internal circulation roads and private drives within the Menards and Walmart subdivisions. Signage, site plan, and sign elevations are included as part of the application packet. The proposed signage for this location meets all other city sign requirements. Under conditions, there are none, and that concludes the staff report.
Petitioner's here? You swear the evidence you're about to present us the truth under penalty of law? Name and address.
My name's Dave Brink. I'm from Allen Industries, representing Bell Tire at the seven-eight-four-four West Central Avenue, Toledo, Ohio.
Any comments?
Um, we appreciate you hearing this petition. Bell Tire is real excited to come to Joliet for, this is a new market for Bell Tire. Bell Tire is very strong throughout Michigan and has, uh, moved into Indiana in the last couple of years, into Indianapolis most recently, and along the Turnpike at Alcar at Michewaka a couple of years ago. So real excited to come to Joliet, and, uh, we appreciate you hearing this. Um, we, we believe that all these elevations are very valuable. There's decent exposures from, uh, Caterpillar, um, and also from Jefferson, but this is an interior lot. So this signage will be very important to Bell. They need to be identified, uh, their branding. They don't have a lot of, uh, branding recognition in these parts, so this, all the signage will be very critical to their success.
Thank you. Any comments by the board? Questions? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Rolling along, chair closes petition. Ask the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Hold the board.
Mr. Lusio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you all. I just stay there.
As you have noticed, uh, Joliet is, uh, fortunate enough to get two new, uh, Bell Tire, uh, locations here in town, so they're asking for a similar request with this. This is petition twenty twenty-one thirteen. Again, Allen Industries is the applicant. Uh, the owner again is Bell Tire's. This location is thirteen oh one Route fifty-nine. Uh, request again is a series of variations. The applicant is requesting a series of variations for signage for future Bell Tire business, and this one again is located at thirteen oh one Route fifty-nine in front of the, uh, Walmart. Uh, the ZBA makes the final decision for this variation request under site-specific information. The lot of the subject property was created with the approval of the Bell Tire Resubdivision of the Walmart Commercial Subdivision in twenty-twenty. Vacant lot is nine thousand nine hundred square feet in size. The property is Zoned B3 General Business. This petition was filed on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, to the north is B3, uh, General Business and, uh, Friaco's Restaurant and Walmart are, uh, to the north there. Uh, to the south is B4 Village of Sherwood zoning, uh, that's an auto-related use. To the east is R2 Single Family Residential Pheasant Landing Subdivision. To the west is R4 Low Density Multi-Family Residential, that's Hampton Glen Subdivision. Under applicable regulations forty-seven seventeen dot two-one signs, forty-seven seventeen dot two-one-three BB, criteria for granting a sign variation, and those are attached. Discussion, Bell Tire is building a new facility at this location, and the city approved their special use permit request in May twenty-twenty to allow auto tire and repair as part of the tire sales facility. Allen Industries, the sign contractor for Bell Tire, requests variations to install three wall signs on the north, south, and western elevations of the proposed new building. Those are signs N-two, N-three, and N-four in your, uh, sign plan packet, which are elevations that do not face a public street. City of Joliet's zoning ordinance again does not allow business, is, uh, they do allow businesses, one sign for street front. Purpose of the proposed signage is to increase the store's visibility to northbound and southbound Route fifty-nine traffic, as well as traffic utilizing the internal circulation roads and private drives within the Walmart Commercial Subdivision. Signage, site plan, and sign elevations are included as part of the application packet. The proposed signage for this location meets all other city sign requirements. Under conditions, there are none, and that concludes our staff report.
You've been sworn in. Any comments you'd like to make, sir?
Thank you. Um, this is a similar situation in some respects. Bell Tire doesn't have any access off of the main road, off of Route fifty-nine there, so all the patrons need to go north of the, uh, Bell Tire store to the main entrance to Walmart, and then go into the Walmart and around the back. So all of the exposure, all of the elevations are really important to have signage on them, including the back. Um, one other thing I wanted to point out here after going to the site just now, I didn't realize this looking at the Google images, but there's actually, uh, the land falls down probably six or eight feet right there. And the, the depiction of the monument sign, we're showing that on a typical two-foot-tall pedestal, I believe, but I think after being to the site, that pedestal needs to be taller. I'm not sure what the height restriction is on monument signs, but I would recommend to Bell to have a four- or five-foot-tall pedestal, I think, which would be similar to Friaco's, uh, their neighbor next door. So I think we need to raise that monument.
That, that's not part of this consideration, but we could work with you, uh, just administratively on that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that?
Yes.
Any questions by the board? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition. Ask the board for discussion and a motion.
A move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Hold the board.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Lusio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Joliet.
Thank you.
Moving on, the last, uh, application is, uh, twenty twenty-one fourteen. The applicant is Rock Run Ten LLC, CO IDI Logistics. Owner is Midland Trust Company as custodian, FBO, James B. Planey, number sixteen three-three-two-five-seven. Location is fifteen seventy-five Rock Creek Drive, and the request is a variation. Purpose of the request is the petitioner is requesting a variation to allow additional trailer parking that exceeds the allowed accessory parking spaces along and adjacent to the two longest sides of the structure. Zoning Board of Appeals makes the final decision on this request. Under site-specific information, the two-point-five-acre subject site comprises one lot within the Rock Run Business Park subdivision. The adjacent three-hundred-thousand-square-foot warehouse building is on an adjacent lot and was constructed in twenty thirteen. Existing zoning is I-1 Light Industrial. This case was filed on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, to the north is industrial I-1, to the south again is industrial I-1. East is undeveloped B3, and to the west is industrial I-1. Applicable regulations, uh, section forty-seven seventeen point seventeen-two-nine Off-Street Parking Regulations, section forty-seventeen, forty-seven dash nineteen point eight findings of fact supporting a variation, and you could refer to the attachment, uh, in the petition. Under discussion, the approval of the requested variation on trailer parking will allow the adjacent warehouse building and site to be competitive and attracting and retaining industrial users. The addition, the additional trailer parking area will allow the site to add seventy-nine additional spaces. The proposed location, and you could see your, the attached plan, is south of the warehouse site. A consolidation of parcels is being submitted to consolidate the two lots, so they'll be joined, uh, together. The landscaping plan has been submitted, and you could see attached, which will provide some birmingham and screening along Rock Creek Drive. An additional access drive is not being proposed from this site to Rock Creek Drive. The adjacent warehouses at a disadvantage due to the north side of the building not having dock doors and adjacent trailer parking. Due to this hardship, staff is not recommending that this proposal be subject to the recently passed payment in lieu of taxes, uh, what's referred to as the pilot trailer parking fee requirement. The variation to allow the additional trailer parking area will not cause any negative impacts to the surrounding area. Uh, there can, there are no conditions, and that concludes our staff report.
Petitioner's here? You swear the evidence you're about to present us the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Put out your name and address.
Uh, Jeff Smith, uh, eight ninety-one Marion Hall Circle in Glen Ellyn.
Go on. Anything you have to say?
Uh, just, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to, to do this. Our tenant that's in that building currently is leasing, uh, sixty trailers off-site, and it's created a hardship for him and, uh, uh, from a operational standpoint and cost standpoint. So he has asked us to, uh, to get him additional trailer storage. If we can accomplish that, he's going to sign another six-year term and stay in the building. If, if not for that, he'll have to look at other options. So we appreciate the, uh, approval of the, of the board here to, uh, allow us to do that.
Okay. Any comments? Any comments from the board? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? What an agreeable crowd we have today. Chair closes petition to the floor and ask the board for discussion and a vote. Must be St. Patrick's Day, ain't it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Bring a motion and a second. Yeah, pull the board.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Lusio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on the agenda, uh, under number seven, old new business, not for final action or recommendation, we have none. Moving on to the next agenda item for public comments, this section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding non-agenda items and are allowed a maximum of four minutes. It is not a question-and-answer period, and staff in the Zoning Board of Appeals does not generally respond to public comments. Please note speakers who engage in conduct injurious to the harmony of the Zoning Board of Appeals shall be called to order by the presiding officer and may forfeit the opportunity to speak. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on non-agenda items? Does not look like that, so the next, uh, order of business would be adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn? A second. Hold the board.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Lusio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Okay.